Here.
Bastido.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Verimus.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Dunn is absent. Hill.
Here.
Kolumsky.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Twelve present, one absent, and one vacancy.
Twelve present, one absent, one vacant. We have a quorum. Actually, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance next. All please rise. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Governor of the State of Illinois has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to the COVID-19 outbreak, restricting individuals to gatherings of 60% capacity or less, and all of the city of Elmhurst is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the Mayor of the City of Elmhurst has determined that an in-person meeting for the March 17th City Council meeting may not be practical or prudent in light of the disaster. All of the aldermen of the City Council participating in the May 17th City Council meeting, wherever their physical location, shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and that all discussion and testimony during the meeting can be heard. That's all I need to say. But beyond that, which makes that a little bit superfluous, because A, we don't have any council members who aren't here, and B, there's an executive order today that says all individuals, including those who are fully vaccinated -- well, I guess I should back it up here a little bit. Right, who are fully vaccinated -- I feel like we're missing part of this.
Yeah, it's no mask being a date for.
Well, let me give you the gist of it. If you've been fully vaccinated, you've had two vaccinations, and you're 14 days past your second vaccination, then you're no longer required to wear a face mask per the Governor's order. There are some exceptions, such as hospitals, train stations, public transportation. It's on the honor system, so that's why you see most of these aldermen looking like they're not compliant, but they are because they got their word in advance. So if you're sitting in the audience and you're compliant, meaning you've had your second vaccination more than 14 days ago, you may, if you wish, remove your mask. If you are not compliant, I ask that you keep that on and take a deep breath of fresh air, just don't exhale too deeply. All right. I will also say in advance of -- well, let's move into the next part of the agenda instead. All right. Next, Agenda Item 3, receipt of written communications from the public. Is there any member of the public that has a written communication that they would like to deliver to the council? Not public comment, but written communications. If so, raise your hand. All right, there being none. The next item is 4, public forum. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on any topic. There was a sign-in sheet. The clerk will call the people who are listed on the sign-in sheet at the conclusion of those people who have signed in. I will ask if anybody else wants to speak, and you'll get your opportunity whether you signed in or not. We ask that you limit your comment to three minutes so that we can give everyone an opportunity to speak and so that the council can then proceed on its business. So with that being said, Clerk Tamer, public comment?
Yes, I just want to add that there are some comments that were submitted, and they are posted online for any alderman that want to take a look. And yes, we do have public comments. The first one that signed up is Marcia Murray. Marcia Murray?
Sorry, can I point out order?
Yes.
Clerk, can you clarify that? Because I don't see anything posted on board docs.
Public forum. It's posted under public forum.
Under public forum, not under the receipt of written communications?
No.
Okay.
It's under public forum. It was submitted for a public comment.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And if you want to proceed to the microphone behind -- below the vent over there, and then you state your name with one more back.
Oh, I think you went to that.
There you go. If you would state your name for the record. Address is optional. Sometimes that helps us follow up with you if you want, but the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thanks for letting us speak openly. My name is Marcia Murray, and I'm speaking on behalf of the request for zoning change and variants at 348 North Larch. I live on the block of Larch. I live at 376, and I'm here requesting that the City Council votes no for the request to change the variants from the zoning for R2 to R4. Everyone here that's coming to speak on this, there's going to be a bunch of us, and a lot of people have submitted comments as well. We all love Elmhurst. We love living here. We love our neighborhood. We love our neighbors. We're not here complaining. We are asking that the City Council does their due diligence and does the research to push this through properly. We understand that some people have voiced concerns about a lawsuit because they think this case is comparable to a similar case in Hinsdale. And everyone here has been working on this for two years or more. We've done our due diligence. This case is not like Hinsdale. We're asking you to do the right thing and not be afraid of a lawsuit for Fair Housing Act. This is not the same case. We are not saying no to having a sober living home at 348 North Larch. We're actually saying yes, but we're asking you to do it correctly. We're asking for you, the City Council, to require services by the people who run the facility, require the landlord to make accommodations, require accountability, like everyone else here is accountable for our neighborhood. We bought in the neighborhood because we love it, but I didn't buy next to a building that's a Cape Cod home. They're requesting that eight adult people who are non-related live in a Cape Cod. You can't fit that many people in a chopped-up Cape Cod. This isn't a single-room occupancy like in the city of Chicago. I didn't buy in that type of a neighborhood, but I'm not saying I don't want to live next to a sober living home. We understand people need to reintegrate back into the community. We're not saying no to that. We are saying yes to that, but we're asking you to do it correctly. So please don't be afraid to do your job correctly. We voted for you because we have trust in you. We have faith that you're going to make the right choice because you're listening to your constituents. You need to do your research and make the right choice. Sometimes it's hard, but if everyone did their job afraid of a lawsuit, things wouldn't get anywhere. People claim lawsuits all the time. Do the background like we all have and make the right choice. Please vote to keep the zoning for R2, which allows four to live in the home. We agree with that. We're just asking, please don't put eight people in a Cape Cod in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go.
All right, do them next. All right. If you're on the line and you want to do public comment, we will take that at the conclusion of those who have signed in, so please stand by and keep your phone on mute. Thank you.
Sarah Dockry.
I live on the North Larch block, and I agree with everything Marcia said. We are, you know, in total support of a sober home. It's not why we're all here tonight. I'll try to read through this pretty quickly. As we return here tonight following the DPZ vote in favor of the variants, I ask why the Larch residents' concerns are being ignored, even by our own aldermen, who aldermen is not here tonight to acknowledge any of these comments. The years of verbalized and written concerns are a witness to the ongoing problems that 348 Larch ignored. Not only are lived experiences are ignored, but our expertise as social workers and healthcare providers are ignored. Ignored that this home was converted to a three-flat in a single-family residence district, no permit. Ignored renting up to eight residents when zoned for four. Gets caught, lays low, then does it again. Ignored builds a giant ISO garage, no permit. Ignored again, leaves a giant dumpster in the driveway for over a year, no permit. Drug paraphernalia, acts of violence and death. By all accounts, a terrible neighbor, yet somehow squeezing out of any real responsibility. So why does Gary Vishen get to flout rules, bypass inspections for 30 years, and then get rewarded with a variance that doubles his rental income? Kudos to him for finding the right loophole. Now his shingle says sober living while he hides behind federal protection. As I said in 2019, properly and ethically opening a sober home includes following city rules, being transparent, and being a good neighbor. This late grab at a zoning variance after being caught in violation is duplicitous and deceitful. You will be rewarding him for his years of blatant disregard of neighbors and the city. This is about money, not his sudden wokeness for the disenfranchised. Shame on the council if this is allowed. You've had almost two years to get this right, two years to review guidelines for sober homes based on materials presented. You've had input from social workers well-versed in what makes a successful sober home. I submitted national standards by NAR and a letter from American College of Physicians. Did you read and consider any of our submitted documents? If this variance is approved, you're backwardly and ineptly trying to provide a needed resource instead of thoughtfully putting into place a very needed commodity. Are you giving in to threats of litigation? This hinders and hurts the cause of real sober housing efforts. I provided the PDF of the Judiciary House Committee hearing from 2018 examining sober living homes. The witnesses speak of ongoing concerns of the exploitative use of sober homes. As previously mentioned, Oxford House is an already-existing nonprofit with a model already in place. Contrast this to Carpenter's Tools website, which continues to state they are a 501(c)(3) even though the status has been revoked. We brought this up two years ago during committee, but the website continues to ask for donations with this falsehood. So they are a nonlicensed, nonprofessional organization making false claims to be something they're not. Do you want this on your conscience or on your voting record? We have stated over and over, we're not objecting to a sober home. We're objecting to a well-known bad actor holding Elmhurst City Council hostage with a threatened lawsuit, even though the variance is contingent upon CTM management.
Excuse me. You're over your three minutes, so if you want to wrap it up, and if you don't get through it, you can certainly submit it, and we'll pass it around to the council as well. Thank you.
Okay. I'll wrap it up. I'll submit. There's a lot more I need to say, but I also want to mention that Gary Vishen was a previous Naperville Township supervisor, knows his way around ordinance and other obstacles, and now he's involved in an election dispute in Naperville. If you guys look it up, he was running for Assessor. Another example of him trying to screw processes in place. But I will submit the rest.
All right, thank you.
Lynn Zaplaw Tyup. Apologize if I -- my name's wrong.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Zaplaw, and I've resided at 395 North Larch for over 14 years. I want to first start my remarks with reminding the public that the Zoning and Planning Commission recommended the denial of the conditional use permit for 348 North Larch in its report dated October 23rd, 2019. At this time, there were already concerns regarding potential building code upgrades that would be required. After the March 9th, 2020 meeting of the DPZ, city staff made several written and oral communication attempts with the property owner and the applicant to conduct an inspection of the property. However, the applicant declined to allow an inspection. The applicant would not allow an inspection of the property. At the November 23rd, 2020 meeting of the DP&amp;Z Committee, none of the members voted to approve the conditional use permit. None. It was only after the DP&amp;Z Committee denied the conditional use permit that the applicant agreed to the inspection. The inspection was conducted in December 2020, and it identified violations. A follow-up inspection later found that the violations were brought into compliance. Now, in April 2021, the same DP&amp;Z Committee members voted to rescind the November 2020 report and replace it with a new report recommending approval with five conditions. So, as a property owner in Elmhurst, it now seems that it's permissible to convert my residence to a group home or another type of property where over four unrelated people can reside. I don't need to get proper permits, and I can ignore current zoning ordinances without worrying about fines. If there's problems or code violations, I can just remedied them after the fact. The approval of this request is tantamount to allowing the Cape Cod-style, single-family home at 348 North Larch to be converted into an apartment structure. This property has had several violations that were only remedied after the DP&amp;Z Committee denied the conditional use permit. City Council members, I respectfully request that you vote against the conditional use permit for 348 North Larch Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ann Grillick Anderson.
Over the last 20 months, I have researched--
Excuse me, could you just state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Ann Anderson. Thanks. Over the last 20 months, I've researched Elmhurst zoning regulations, fair housing laws, ADA accommodations, sober living homes, best practices for substance use treatments, and countless other topics related to this case. My neighbors have done even more research, and we share our findings with you today as we have over the last nearly two years. Yet you are the ones with the power to vote on this issue. Have you sufficiently researched and listened to and considered everything that we, as a community, have brought forth? I remind you of three key points and outstanding questions related to the property owner. 348 North Larch is within an R2 zone and currently limited to four unrelated persons in the residence, yet it has operated illegally for years. This property owner has a history of illegal actions related to the residence. I believe these previous activities are, in fact, relevant to this case, as the property owner ultimately remains accountable for his home. What is the consequence for this property owner, and what would his responsibility be moving forward? Number of persons. The application indicates that residents live independently. No onsite programming or services are required or even offered as an option. Rental payments are deposited directly into the homeowner's family trust. They are not reinvested into the nonprofit. They are not given back to the ministry. Other than increased cash for the family trust, what is the rationale to expand to eight persons? Sober home. 348 North Larch does not operate as a sober home in accordance with guidelines and best practices as outlined by sober living accrediting bodies. If you approve this sober living dwelling in your community, the nature of the program at this location would drastically need to change. What is your plan to ensure the organization acknowledges and complies with the standard of sober living facilities that you claim it would be? I support sober living for four unrelated persons within the R2 zoning. I believe all of my neighbors do as well, and we have told you that repeatedly. However, I have yet to hear a clear reason for expanding the residence to accommodate seven or eight unrelated persons. I care so deeply about my home. I care deeply about my neighborhood. My neighbors and I continue to raise issues, questions, concerns, and what we bring up is consistently dodged, ignored, and not addressed. Please answer our questions. Show us your neighbors, that you have put as much thought into this case as we have. Demonstrate that you are fully informed and acting strategically and not governing out of fear. I ask that you not support this variance. We all agree that people need a safe space to heal. So develop a plan and do it right. Research the best practices, find the best environment, act with intention and leadership on the issue of recovery, rather than exchanging platitudes, passive shrugs, and uninformed acceptance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel Leapert.
Hi, my name's Dan Leapert. I'm a Elmhurst resident of nine years and of Larch Avenue for six. Thank you for having me today. True equality has no labels, does not discriminate, and does not favor. I wholeheartedly support the property functioning as four residents. Fair and equal treatment at 348 North Larch Avenue should be the same as those who live next door, down the street, and throughout Elmhurst. This property should have the same liberties, responsibilities, and regulations as any other residential home. With this notion, I advise the city to seek equality and not confuse fairness with favoritism. I fear that the ambiguous language in the Fair Housing Act has caused the city to act in favoritism of the property's variance request rather than in fairness. I ask the city to willingly to accept the same variance request allowing eight unrelated tenants -- I ask, is the city willing to accept the same variance request allowing eight unrelated tenants to occupy an R2 property from others in the community? If not, what is your reasoning? You probably have a thought in your head right now. My guess is a single-family residential R1 and R2 is largely separated from a multifamily residential primarily because of the amount of residents limited to that occupancy. So allowing this same request would allow this to significantly change the fabric and nature of Elmhurst. Practicing equality allows us to use the same logic and reasoning to deny the variance in this case as well. There's a joint statement that I'd like to read an excerpt from, from the Department of Justice and the Department of Housing and Urban Development. "The Act does not preempt local zoning laws. However, the Act does apply to municipalities and other local government entities and prohibits them from making zoning and land use decisions or implementing land use policies that exclude or otherwise discriminate against protected persons, including individuals with disabilities." So in my mind, "The Act does not preempt local zoning laws" shows that Elmhurst is already cared for in their zoning to be inclusive. There is nothing in Elmhurst zoning or municipal code that discriminates against a sober home facility existing, but it does limit to what capacity and how many occupants can be within that zone. Furthermore, I have a section from Section 9 of the Fair Housing Act directly that I'd like to read to you. "If a locality refuses to waive an ordinance that limits the number of unrelated people who may live in a single-family home, where such a waiver may be necessary for persons with disabilities or an equal opportunity to use and enjoy a dwelling, the locality violates the Act unless the locality can prove that the waiver would impose an undue financial or administrative burden on the local government, or," and I believe this is the key part, "or fundamentally alter the essential nature of the local zoning scheme." Once again, I feel like that directly relates to our case and to all the concerns that we bring to you today. "The fact that the city has designated an R4 zone with up to eight unrelated tenants is further proof that this request fits within the definition of an entirely different zoning scheme. I urge the city to put aside fear, to make a stance. There'll be other municipalities looking at our city as an example for the future of suburbia. Support this home to function within our current zoning scheme, and do not show favoritism and fear of being seen as unfair. Please be fair and show equality to every resident that resides in Elmhurst." Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Mauer.
Like the many before me, I'm here tonight to ask the City Council to vote against granting--
Jennifer, please remember to state your name, even though I just did it for you, but--
I'm sorry. Jennifer Mauer, resident of Elmhurst. I'm here tonight to ask the City Council to vote no on granting the conditional use permit for 348 North Larch, allowing seven to eight unrelated people to reside there. We recognize there are questions and concerns about a possible federal lawsuit alleging violations of the Fair Housing Act if this permit is denied, and those concerns are augmented by the pending case in Hinsdale. As some of my neighbors have pointed out, and others to follow me will illustrate, these two cases are simply not the same. But I'm going to use my time today to focus your attention on the joint statement from the Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Department of Justice about the application of the federal -- sorry, excuse me, the Fair Housing Act as it relates to state and local land use laws and practices. Section 21 of this statement reads, "Can a local government deny a group home's request for a reasonable accommodation without violating the Fair Housing Act?" Yes, a local government may deny a group home's request for a reasonable accommodation if there is no disability-related need for the requested accommodation because there is no relationship between the requested accommodation and the disabilities of the residents." That's all a quote. None of that's me. This is directly applicable here. In this case, the applicant is asking for an accommodation in the form of increased occupancy above what current zoning allows. So the question you, as council members, must ask, is there a relationship between the disabilities of the residents and the need for this requested accommodation? I believe the answer is no. There is nothing about addiction or alcoholism as disabilities that necessitates that there are a particular number of residents in a sober home. People can continue their recovery in a home with two, three, or four people just as easily as they could in a home with greater occupancy. The applicant, from the documents I've seen submitted, has offered no evidence of a relationship between the accommodation they are requesting and the disability of addiction. There is no therapy or programming provided at the home that necessitates having more than four unrelated people in residence and keeping in line with the current zoning. The rent money from the residence is not reinvested back into Carpenter's Tools Ministries. It is deposited into the owner's family trust, as stated by them in the written application. So the financial impact here is to the owner. Even if this permit is denied, Carpenter's Tools Ministries is able to continue its mission of providing a sober home for four residents in alignment with current zoning, and they are free to pursue opening other sober homes with greater occupancy in areas zoned for such occupancy like R4. I have been personally impacted. I have recently buried a friend due to this addiction. I am not unempathetic to the crisis in this society and the need to support people in recovery. I'm asking you do so within the parameters of our existing zoning. Undoubtedly, I believe the question will come up, that if this permit is denied and the occupancy is restricted to four people, what becomes of the other three currently in residence? This is, unfortunately, the risk that Carpenter's Tools Ministries assumed when they established a group sober home in violation of existing zoning ordinance. Only pursued this permit once confronted, and then delayed inspections of the home for months, creating undue burden on this council.
Ms. Mauer, I would ask you to wrap up, if you would, and you can, of course, submit your comments, too, at the end.
As such, I ask that they now take responsibility for the irresponsible way in which they started this otherwise noble endeavor. That's it.
Thank you.
Adam Smets.
Thank you so much. Mayor Levin, before you start the timer for my three minutes, I wanted to welcome our new alderman. You could go in. I just wanted to welcome everyone and welcome you to the City Council as well, so--
Thank you, Mr. Smets.
Okay, we will start now. Okay. You've heard from several of the -- oh, Adam Smets, 360 North Larch. I realize I should start there first. You've heard from several of the neighbors this evening and received a petition with 99 signatures. It's in your docs. If you can't find your board docs, raise your hand. I'd be glad to give you a tour. Ninety-nine neighbors who understand this case are passionate about life safety, recovery, are part of the two-year and longer narrative and conversation, in all due respect, have been doing their homework for two years on this topic, if not longer. We are not against a sober home, as you've heard from each of our neighbors up to this point and those to follow, but we are against a city government that is not in good faith executing the policies, bylaws, and zoning ordinances that you each individually and collectively have been charged to apply. As one example from discussions with several aldermen, past and present, requests have been made for the Fair Housing Act and ADA training that they could receive related to this matter to be informed and educated. Those requests were either not answered, dismissed, and the training was not provided. Those requests were either not answered, dismissed, and the training was not provided. I'm unclear about how any one of you or any of the other committees can vote without being educated on the matter that you're reviewing and voting on. This is like buying a car without a test drive, looking at pictures, never visiting a dealership, and only because someone said, "Trust me, it's a great car, it's only got a few miles on it." Worse yet, you should buy the car because something bad could happen to you if you don't buy the car. This is exactly where we are right now. The car is a Hinsdale car. As a community, we've been dismissed and written off in several cases, and let me be clear for those that are not or have not been listening. We have been told that this case's decision is not being factored out of the fear of Hinsdale's case and a potential lawsuit. I will be very clear, that is a blatant lie. It is in the documents and in the FOIA materials that I am receiving. This is solely not about your heart and emotions. We've heard several times from aldermen who dismiss the facts and legal responsibility that purely Elmhurst should just really help these people. We don't deny the fact and the need for folks to be in recovery and actually have services and eligible resources. Your job is to help them by putting actual requirements and guidance from either the National Alliance of Recovery Residences, NAR, which you heard previously, the criteria from Illinois Department of Human Services Division of Substance Abuse Prevention and Recovery Residences, or perhaps the National Sober Living Association, or I can continue on with all the associations that provide best practices for these spaces. Instead, you're recommending five requirements that will never be enforced based on Elmhurst track record, nor any compliance requirements, fines for noncompliance, or frequency for any evaluation or verification are noted in what you've provided, which should be adopted. Let's not forget that not one of those single items of five contain anything about the residents of that property who are in recovery. Zero. So we've arrived at a yes. You do have a concern about balancing the legal costs, image, reputation, and litigation if a case were to be filed and weighed against just approving this request, moving forward, and what could be the resulting impact? Having a case with a new administration, straddling an old administration with incoming members, and those who just want to pass it along. I just want to make sure and raise that this is not just about a federal case. I get it. This is your opportunity to do the right thing, make an educated and informed decision. Rather than making a dangerous precedent about these R2 zones, I know that there's some new folks on this group and folks that may not have read this feedback. And Mayor, I realize I may go over, my husband is on the line, and he'll continue where I left off if I reach the three-minute point. Both matters are regarding sober living facilities when we talk about Hinsdale and Elmhurst.
Mr. Smets, you're actually beyond the three minutes, but if you want to wrap up and have someone to pick up.
Pardon my watch, I'm at two minutes and 10 seconds, so if you'd like me to do that, I can stop.
Do you have a metric watch? Take 20 more seconds, go ahead.
I'll finish up this page, and then I will be glad to turn over the floor. Because this is a point, and I'm going to pause the timer for a second, Mayor, with all due respect, there are aldermen on this committee that cannot explain the differences between the Hinsdale case and the Elmhurst case, and I feel it's important that they hear this information because I can't guarantee they will read the material that's provided to me now. So I'm going to start the timer, I'm going to read these, and my husband will continue from there. Both matters are regarding sober living facilities in which the neighborhoods are zoned for single-family houses.
Mr. Smets, you're really at about four minutes, so if you wouldn't mind having your husband take over at this point, and then you can certainly submit that as well. I'm sure the council will read whatever you submit.
Noted. Thanks.
Thank you.
I have copies I'll provide too, where should I set them?
You can hand it right up to the clerk now or afterwards.
I'll leave it on Dunn's desk, even though he couldn't be bothered to attend today.
Thank you.
You call the next one.
Yep, sure. Tim Glennon.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tim Glennon. I am a longtime resident of Larch Avenue. I live at 373. Obviously, a bunch of my fellow block members have made a lot of good points here. My two concerns are this. First of all, why are we moving to a larger population at this location when there's all the questions that we have about it? How is this facility being monitored? We have their word that they're doing certain things, but really, who's inspecting the place? Who's ensuring that, you know, what is, what are the rules for how this place is going to operate? And how do we know they're being enforced? We kind of have a history of here of kind of not really enforcing these things. So those are my questions, and I ask you to vote your conscience. I obviously, I support the R2 zoning, and, you know, if, if, if the property was regularly inspected, that people could, you know, basically have some proof that things that are being done there are the right things, then other kinds of ordinance or other kinds of zoning could maybe be discussed. But I think it's a little premature to jump right to that before we have any proof of what's going on. I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Elizabeth Ryan.
Hello, I'm Liz Ryan. I have lived in the state, in our neighborhood for 27 years. I lived seven of those years directly across the street from this house at 348 Larch. Public speaking is my least favorite thing to do, but I feel very strongly about this. And I look around, and I want to thank all of you, and I appreciate that all of you are here, but there's one seat that's vacant, and that's our alderman Dunn, and I'm very disappointed. I can't imagine why in the world he is not here tonight, so I just want to make that noted. I do feel strongly about this house because I did live there and I still live close by, or I lived across the street. But I just want to give my support in asking you not to support the variance. They have violated the ordinance that was set in place because of this house. I don't know how many of you aldermen worked with Jan Vanek or Norm Leader, your predecessors, but they put that ordinance in place because of 348 Larch. They didn't follow those rules. So don't reward bad behavior, please. Thank you.
Kathy Tomaszewicz.
Hi, I'm Kathy Tomaszewicz, and thanks for listening to us today. It's very discouraging that once again we are here about the house at 348 North Larch. My husband and I have lived across the street from the house for past 31 years. Since 2006, there's been so many issues that we've had a fight. This new case, changing it from R2 to R4, is yet another attempt, in our opinion, that Gary, by Gary Vichian, to rent the home for his benefit and not the benefit of others. The sober home concept is a good one and can help people who need a place to live, receive counseling, respect, and healing. If this home was being run properly, the drug overdose last year would have been discovered immediately and not days after the person died in the home. Does this sound like a well-run facility to you? The rest, request for additional renters seems illogical if the people living there now, in my opinion, are not really receiving the help that they can. I'm not here to say no to Homer sober home, but that we don't need seven or eight unrelated people living in a home unsupervised. It sounds more like an apartment building. And I've lived there where previously we've had renters with sketchy pasts that brought their problems with them and upset the neighborhood, and again, no consideration of the neighborhood, especially Gary Vichian. And I am so proud of my neighbors who are very eloquent at speaking, it makes me very nervous, but I have to agree as well. I have a cousin who lives in one of these homes and has for 15 years and has saved his life many times and realized that he can't live anywhere else, but it's run so differently and so properly, and I think the eight people are, it's ridiculous. So that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Lonnie Allen.
I'm Lonnie Allen. I live at 354 North Addison, which is on the, one block over from the subject home, or as a crow flies, about half a block. My entire block signed the petition requesting that you hold the line at four occupants of this home. I think there's 100% agreement there. Everybody is totally opposed to increasing the number of people in residence of that home for all the reasons that have just been explained to you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Scott Tayup.
Thank you. My name is Scott Tob. I live at 395 North Larch. I think the reason why you're hearing from so many of the neighbors speak up against the application for conditional use at 348 Larch is really because the property has been a repeated source of trouble over the years, and if I may, the request for conditional use has been made disingenuously at best and perhaps dishonestly. The application was filed only after it was discovered that the property was violating, excuse me, was operating in violation of city ordinances. There was never an intent to actually request permission to exceed zoning limits on the number of unrelated occupants living together. The property owner was previously cited for violating those very provisions, so there is not even a plausible argument that the failure to request the conditional use in advance was based on ignorance. The application notes that it was never the intent of the applicant to run a group home, and that, quote, "Most of the ordinance does not apply to our situation." If the ordinance doesn't apply, what does? Well, as the application notes, the weekly fee would be collected from residents and payment made to the Vichian Family Trust. The owner gets more rent the more people who are living at the home. This was confirmed in the 2019 ZPC meeting as well. Given the previous violations of zoning requirements at this property, it's evident that the lease with Carpenter's Tools Ministries is really a vehicle to pass through rents to the owner, whose intent is to run the property as a multi-unit apartment building. I don't believe that my neighbor's concerns have anything to do with the residents who live or may live at the property. In fact, all of the same people would be permitted to live there, whether the conditional use is granted or not, just in lower numbers. The concerns instead are because the conditional use application is being used as a Trojan horse to allow the property to be operated as an apartment building. The owner wasn't satisfied with the income from leasing to four people and therefore started leasing to eight. When caught, the conditional use application was the next attempt. The joint HUD DOG statement that you've heard about and read says, "A local government may generally restrict the ability of groups of unrelated persons to live together without violating the Act, as long as restrictions are imposed on all such groups." Would the City Council approve the operation of a regular apartment building at 348 Larch? An application submitted by an owner who had previously repeatedly violated city ordinances that are intended to prohibit the operations of apartment buildings in residential neighborhoods? I believe the answer is no, we would not approve that request. If so, then denying this application for conditional use would be consistent treatment. The identity of the intended tenants should not compel approval of a request that would otherwise be denied. If the council approves this conditional use request, it will be putting its stamp of approval on a scheme to operate an apartment building in violation of the intent of zoning rules. Thank you.
Dan Liepert. I'm sorry.
Back to you.
Dan Liepert. Did you do it twice? Okay, all right. Okay. Leslie Bockel.
These must be, they're not here, but they signed up online, so Leslie Bockel's not here?
Leslie Beckel, yeah.
Beckel, sorry. I'm sorry?
So just that, you're not going to do anything here, then? Just want to make sure.
Correct. Okay.
Sure, nope. I'm just going to make a special note that both of you guys had emailed those in, which those, we'll double-check and make sure they're up, but I believe we put everything up that was emailed.
Okay. His name is Mark Beckel.
Point of order.
That was distributed to the council earlier.
Point of order, I think in some public meetings, people come and they are expected to sign in just to attend, where we don't do that, so maybe some people signed in thinking it was for attendance.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Next one, please.
Okay. Mark Rafin.
Hi, everyone, I'm Mark Rafin. Here we, here we are back here again, and my comments are just going to be pretty much in line with what I've said at each of the other meetings. Again, nothing but empathy for the residents of Larch. I can't help but take notes how eloquently the research is done, how it's, how it's, how it's distributed to everybody. I can't imagine the amount of work that went into all that, and I don't have that, you know, I'm not that scholastic, I just, I kind of just, given my opinion on what I see as just the right thing to do, and I can't be more complimentary to the three who voted to pass it on our last meeting, and the attorneys who simply said that the zoning laws and the rules and the world we live in in the 1950s, we're having four people of different last names, kind of meant you were running a flop house, you know? Today, I don't know, I'm on, I've been with my sweet wife for 20 years, she's been with me for 20 years, we're both on second marriages, though, and her daughter goes by her married name. You could have five last names with three people in my Elmhurst home, and I don't think that would be a problem. A family unit is different today. Five, six, seven, eight people in, you know, put a number on it, who cares whether they have different last names or not? What you have on Larch currently, with all due respect to the horrifying neighbor Gary has been proven to be over the years, it hasn't been the case in the last couple of years. A death at that house and not seen for a day, well, it's not being monitored like a group home would be. Do you need a group home or a resident? There's a lot of gray area in there today, based on the fact that in the year 2021, we have a drug addiction opioid problem in this country worldwide that makes the COVID vibe look silly. So I can't compliment the attorneys and the council enough, or at least considering the whole gray area between the two extremes of all the legalities that go into all the zoning laws and rules and everything else, and just kind of take it for what it is. Had it never been brought to the attention of anybody, what you'd have is seven guys that don't drink, that go to work, that have checking accounts, that are pulling their families together, having their lives together, like me, like so many that we know, and there isn't a single solitary person in this room, in this town, in this county, in the state, or in this country that isn't affected by the problems that we see today. I vote that we keep it the way it is. And do what you said was a good idea. You suggested last time that the good idea would be to monitor the place for a month, for a year, for two years. And just while you're doing that, you good people that are in the positions of authority, do your due diligence behind the scenes, change, tweak, modify the laws to accommodate for what we're dealing with today in the year 2021, not in the year 1950. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
That's all that signed up, Mayor.
All right, that's, those are all the people that have signed in. We're going to go to people who may be online, and then if anyone in the audience has not yet had the opportunity to speak, I'll ask you to raise your hand, and then we will give you the opportunity as well. So I'm kind of new in this job, did I just say, is anyone on the line? Anyone on the phone that wants to speak? All right, would you state your name, please?
Certainly. Justin Reese, resident of Larch Avenue, and I'm continuing Adam's statement.
Thank you, Jeff, please.
Comparing the two cases. Thank you.
I think he said just.
Both matters are regarding.
Excuse me.
Sober living.
Justin Smets.
Smets?
Yeah, Justin Smets. Reed.
What was it, Reed? Thank you.
Thank you, proceed, Justin.
Thank you. Both matters are regarding sober living facilities in which the neighborhoods were zoned for single-family houses. Yes, the Village of Hinsdale claimed Trinity Sober Living, and Elmhurst claimed Carpenter-y Tools Ministry violated its zoning code, which prohibits commercial uses in residential areas and limits the number of unrelated individuals who can live in a single-family home to three. Yes, the crux of Trinity Sober Homes argument in Hinsdale and what now appears to be the claim in Elmhurst is that they failed to make reasonable accommodation to afford equal opportunity to enjoy the use of the house for the Fair Housing Act and recently ADA. While on the surface, both matters appear While on the surface, both matters appear similar, they are very different in the way Hinsdale addressed the matter versus now how Elmhurst is addressing 348 North Larch. Let's review the differences again, so the committee has clarity in the distinct differences. Number one, in Hinsdale, the homeowners around the matter were against a sober living facility. This is not the case for Elmhurst. As neighbors, we understand the value and need for such programs. Number two, in Hinsdale, the request for exemption was not forwarded to their village board for consideration. Instead, Hinsdale filed a lawsuit against the home and the program. The lawsuit stated that, quote, "Even though the home currently had fewer than three unrelated residents, it was in violation of the zoning code because it was a commercial use," end quote. In Elmhurst, as we are all aware, this has been under consideration for two years with endless conversation and in violation of codes. Number three, the key distinction that I want the committee to hear is that rather than Hinsdale telling the program to, quote, "Apply for a special use permit or a variance" or "Try to negotiate a reasonable solution with him," the village immediately filed suit, end quote. And this was addressed in Elmhurst and has been under consideration for two years. I would encourage a city attorney to provide written comment on his opinions related to this matter beyond the fear of litigation. This has not been commented in public forum, but would encourage the discussion out of executive session. My last note is to call out the discounted explanation provided in April 27th letter that explains a flip of the development planning and zoning committee's decision because they, quote, "reviewed police calls," end quote, as the primary basis for the reversal. You reviewed police calls, and that remediated the other issues from the previous nay vote? And we wonder why there are concerns about transparency, legitimacy, and informed decision-making. This is only exacerbated by the grumblings, emails, and side conversations about the concerns that several of you have about the threat of a lawsuit and the need to move this along. Yes, we've heard you. In my closing, my recommendations are to, one, Mr. Mayor, I request that you provide Fair Housing Act training to all individuals who are voting on this matter. This training should be provided by a third party and not by the city attorney. Please provide them with the education needed on this topic. Two, further, I request this matter be delayed until the outcome of the case with Hinsdale as to remove the barrier which has been used to levy a decision that is not based on facts. As alderman, you were forwarded two documents from the mayor on Sunday, May 16th regarding federal court decisions to not dismiss this case. Please read the introduction on page six from the original order. Read it. Don't just take word for it. What the village did not do was consider, let alone grant, Trinity's reasonable accommodation request or follow what the village claims is its standard procedure for evaluating such requests. It did not refer Trinity's request to its Board of Trustees, even though the village so referred another zoning-related accommodation request that did not involve persons in recovery from the addiction. With instructions to grant the request deference, the village's actions followed strong neighborhood opposition to an unanimous towards person in addiction recovery living in Hinsdale.
Mr. Rush, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up your over four minutes, and you also may submit your comments to the council, so they will be heard.
Thank you. We've submitted the full comment. Thank you for your time. We would like you to vote no.
Is there anyone else on the phone line that wants to participate in public comment? Right there being none, is there anyone in the audience here today that did not have an opportunity to sign in? I'm sorry, someone?
Yes, I would like to.
All right, if you'd state your name, please.
Yes, this is Janie Leipert. I'm also a resident of North Larch.
All right, can you spell your last name?
L E I P E R T.
All right, Ms. Leipert, if you'd like to proceed, we're listening.
Thank you. I'd just like to reiterate a couple of things and note that we're requesting that the council please work within the federal laws as well as the local zoning laws. It is possible, as many neighbors have stated, and persons with disabilities are able to request reasonable accommodations. However, as stated, this request does not relate to the disability. So the request to go from four to seven or eight doesn't relate to the disability, therefore we can reject this question for accommodation. I hope that, as Justin just stated, that the council will be, you know, fully versed in all of the legal work that goes into this, you know, and this is a big case to wrap everyone's heads around, and I just hope that everyone vote with the full knowledge and full understanding that makes them comfortable. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the line? All right, is there anyone in the audience here today that didn't get a chance to sign in? We have one, anyone else? Two? All right, sir in the back, if you'd want to proceed over to the microphone, then you'll be next in the front. We have three.
Thank you. My name is John Thomas Chevitz. I live on Larch Avenue. You heard from my wife earlier. I just want to take this moment for public record that, Mayor Levin, that you're going to be the fourth administration to deal with this, the neglect of this landlord. You could go through, you could Google this, there's an article from 2007. I don't want to get graphic, this is nothing against the sober home, but we've been dealing with this, at least I have, my family, neighbors, for 25 years of this landlord who's neglected our neighborhood, no respect for us or the respect to the city of Elmhurst. You're the fourth administration, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Blue shirt, front row, thank you.
My name is Jay Webb. I live at 348 North Larch. And I'd like to just start out here, a couple of things before my comments. When we talk about this ordinance that the city has, it was something, a contention in the beginning, as it reads that housing developmentally disabled individuals living in a home with supervised supervision, acting as surrogate parents and performing group duties, group dinners, and group activities. That's not what we are. We're a sober home, plain and simple. We've got rules that we stand by, and we're sober, and we do appreciate the neighborhood. I've lived here 52 years in Elmhurst. I love Elmhurst. So there's nothing we have against or anything in the last three years. You haven't seen any public urination or anything, right? Or burning rubber off a pipe, I heard the last time, or fighting, or any of that stuff. This is a seven-bedroom, four baths, three kitchens, two living rooms, and a dining room. It's a perfect sober living facility. And we continually hear more of the past, the past, the past. Yes, we've touched on it, and I appreciate the four people living suggestion that you have, but the neighbors really don't know what goes on here. One gentleman contacted me early on and wanted to know by email, and that's the only activity or any communications I got from any of the neighbors. The, what we have, what we have at our place is four, right now, oh, I don't want to... We have, in the three years, we've had 22 people live there. Three years. It's not a revolving door. We've got six there now. So those others have left, either successfully or relapsed. We averaged five people there, just under five last year. We don't have the thing booked. 18 days in three years, we've had seven-room people, and we don't go to eight, by the way, for any record there. We've got seven bedrooms, seven people. We've got five, I'm sorry, I'm losing my train of thought, five people there, currently we have six. We have relapses. If anybody knows recovery, relapse is part of it. But we have compassion for these people. We don't kick them to the curb. We don't eat our young. If it, it's not a blatant relapse. They come in with six months sober, so they're not right off the, you know, the rehab cycle. We'll find, I work in the industry, I'll find them a treatment center to go to, they'll go to a halfway house, not a three-quarter house like we are, a halfway house for a couple of months, and if we have seen promise in them, we'll bring them back. And that room's been saved for them for three months. When everybody says Gary's dumping money into his family trust, it's not true. It goes through us first, and then we have an agreement on what we pay, and that's the way it is. But he's paying the utilities, the taxes, and everything else. So it's not just a seven-room money-making machine. I got retired, retired boarded, 66-year-old boarded trade resident. I got a 62-year-old part-time worker at Mariano's. I'm 64-years-old. We got a 42-year-old guy who erects cell towers, got a 42-year-old that's going to, going back to school for his master's in addiction recovery. We have another gentleman that's in, he's working his way out of the house so we can get back with his family. He's a tech salesman. It's not what you think it is. We are family. We have a bond, I would say, better than most families, not most, maybe, but as good as so many families living in this town. And it's out of compassion. And the thing with the violations, real quick, we had circuits we had to change out with big violations that people talked about. We had to ground, run a ground from the water heater and furnace to the back box. That was the improvements we had to make. It's just, the stigma in this town for recovery and addiction is something that is on my heart, and it really comes in, a couple of simple, you know, it's like not getting an invitation to the block party. We're like the house where the ball goes in, everybody's afraid to come and get it. We're normal people.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
I'm giving you a little extra time because you're the only one speaking or one of the few on that side, but if you would wrap it up, your substantial...
Okay, I'll just finish it, and this is, this kind of gives a whole summary. So alcoholics kind of have a sweet tooth, we lose the drinking thing, but we hold on to a big sweet tooth, and candy is our thing. Halloween time come, we fight and discuss about how much candy to get and what to get and everything else. But you know what it's like to watch the mothers and fathers shoo the kids away from art, walk way up? They'll get halfway up, and they'll, no, 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 not that house, come on, we've got to move along. What's that about? What are you teaching the kids? You know? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir, did you want to speak?
My name's Jeff Frans. I live at the house, 348 North Larch also. I'm the 66-year-old commodity trader that he was talking about. I just wanted to clear up a couple of things. I want to reiterate what Jay said, that we've rarely had seven and never had eight, and so it's kind of misleading to use that number. And I also wanted to point out that the disabilities, Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 and the Civil Rights Act of 1994 clearly lay out who qualifies for the, to be considered disabled, and alcoholics are right in there. So they're occasionally granted allowances to exceed the four-person limit, and that's all we're asking. We were good citizens, as Jay said. The only way you'd know it was a sober house at all is because we have a sign planted in our front yard. And so I just wanted to say that I've lived, you know, I moved to Elmhurst when I was six months old, and I love it, and I think this would be an opportunity for the city to get behind sober homes and similar kinds of institutions to show that we can, we can lead, we can be at asset, and I hope that we, at some point, we would consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I believe, anyone else that we missed? All right, then I'm going to close public comment at this time, public forum. We're going to move on to item five on the agenda, the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that anyone wants to remove from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I think I'm going to say something about the one item on the consent agenda.
Do you want to wait till they get them removed?
Yeah, do it now.
Is there someone pulls it?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Pull it.
Did you have a motion?
Yes, request, item 5.7 to be removed.
5.7, all right. Anything else? All right, at this time, I'm going to ask the city attorney to make a comment.
Yes, there's an item on the council's agenda, thanks, Mayor. There's an item on the council's agenda which is a settlement agreement regarding litigation between the city of Elmhurst and Illinois American Water. So the city in 2017 filed suit for breach of contract against Illinois American Water. Substantial dollars were owed the city for excess sewage charges that Illinois American Water had failed to pay. This memorandum of understanding settlement agreement that's before you tonight settles this litigation for $1.3 million that'll be paid directly to the city. In addition, Illinois American Water will spend $1.8 million in upgrades to their system, which will, of course, benefit the city of Elmhurst directly. So happy to answer any questions, but that's my highlight of that item on your agenda.
And that is item 5.12.
Thanks, Mayor.
All right, any questions on 512 before we go on? All right. With that, I'll ask for a motion to pass the consent agenda minus item 5.7. Alderman Mulliner, seconded by Alderman Palomski, any discussion? All in favor, say aye, or do we need to do a roll call?
Roll call, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn is absent. Hill?
Aye.
Palomski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays, one absent, one vacancy.
12 ayes, one nay, one vacancy, the consent agenda passes. Clerk Tamer, if you'd read the language on 5.7.
Therefore, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee recommends that the city council approve the requested conditional use permit with five conditions. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for city council approval. Signed, Michael Hanquist Chair, Mark A. Mulliner Vice Chair, and Bob Dunn, Alderman Ward Two.
We have a motion to approve to put this before the council. Alderman Mulliner and Alderman Brennan. All right, does, did you want to take the floor? Second ward?
Yes, yes. I'd like to make a motion to defer item 5.7 to the next city council meeting.
Is there a second on that? Alderman Palomski, for the Alderman here, this is, there's a procedure in our rules that, without debate, it can be continued by one meeting to the very next meeting. So this is not a delay on the table or anything more fancy, it's in our local ordinance. So I don't know if there's any questions on procedure, but we would be proceeding directly to continue this to the next meeting, which would be, I believe, June 1st, June 7th, because we are not meeting on the last Friday. All right, with that, I'll ask Clerk Tamer to call the roll.
Hanquist?
No.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
No.
Brennan?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn is absent. Hill?
Aye.
Palomski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
10 ayes, 2 nays, 1 absent, 1 vacancy.
10 ayes, 2 nays, 1 vacant, 1 absent, the motion continues. I do want to state that Alderman Dunn is out of town in business, and he was aware of this motion. He will be reviewing the tape, he told me, before the next meeting, and instead of participating by phone, he elected to stay on his business trip because he knew that there was very little possibility to be voted on today. I'll also say, we appreciate all the comments. This delay has been requested by a number of the residents, so to make sure that any kind of request for the Freedom of Information Act... Act were fully complied with before we voted, and to make sure that the alderman would have enough time to do all the due diligence that's been requested by the residents. So we'll move on to item 6.1, item 6, reports and recommendations of appointed elected officials. Mayor, first of all, I want to remind the public that the fifth ward vacancy of the seat that I formally held will be considered for appointment if you turn in your applications, which are available on the website, and must be received by June 4th. I also wanted to publicly thank the residents of the Grove of Elmhurst. It was Nursing Home Week last week. I went out and spent about an hour and a half meeting with the various residents in their rooms, and it was good to talk to people who don't get a chance to get out too much. Did you have an envelope for me? You want to handle it?
Sure.
All right. That's, that'll be all I have, and now, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. In lieu of the Memorial Day Parade, we will be conducting the Memorial Day Convoy for a second year. This is a, basically taking the parade to the community, organized with a lot of help from some of the aldermen and the director of the chamber, and also Ralph Pachanio and the American Legion. It will be on Memorial Day, and it will start and stop at the Veterans Memorial with parking available at Elmhurst University. It will start at 9:30 on that Monday, 9:30 a.m., and go through the entire city, through all seven wards, trying to hit as many major streets and public areas as possible that will allow people to be able to walk to the convoy route or to park in one of the public parking lots and then observe the convoy as it comes by. And then we will conclude that with the annual ceremony at the Veterans Memorial at 11 o'clock a.m. Thank you, Mayor.
Anything else, city manager?
Nothing else.
All right. Item 7, is there any other business? Alderman Mulliner?
Go back to reports for a minute.
You want to do that again?
Yeah, I just want to add something.
Very good, back to reports, sorry.
Just two things on, one, to add on to what the city manager said. There is a fundraiser going on for the American Legion that ties to this, and you can purchase ribbons to put along the route of the parade. If people would like to do that, they can go to the chamber website, or they can stop at the American Legion during the lunch hours, and we'll have people there available to give you ribbons. In addition to that, I wanted to make note that the American Legion will begin a car show beginning this Saturday, and it'll be from 11 o'clock to 3 o'clock from this Saturday through October.
Thank you, Alderman Mulliner. Any other reports, I should have said? All right. Being none, item 7, other business. Is there any other business? All right, item 8, a German may have a motion to adjourn. Alderman Cahill, second. It's an easy one. Alderman Veremis, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.